Yes, President.
Mr. Hayes. Ms. Huth.
Here.
Mr. Otto.
Here.
Ms. Pat.
Present.
Mr. Whalen.
Present.
Ms. Wyman.
Here.
Mayor Satterwhite.
Here. Everyone would rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance is required in the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First item on our agenda this evening is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. That's minutes from June 21st. Move approval.
Second.
Give a motion a second. Any additions or corrections? Discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any additions or corrections to the agenda this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to petitions and communications. If anybody in the audience would like to speak to the council for a period of no more than five minutes, if you'll pick up one of these white cards at the back of the room and bring it up myself or the clerk, you'll have a chance to do so. You do have the option of speaking now or at the time of the agenda item. I've got two people here that would like to speak on parking on Florida Avenue. Bonnie Moran, Bonnie, do you want to speak now or ... okay. Bonnie's at 2610 East Florida Avenue.
Good evening, and I appreciate the opportunity to come over tonight. I was going to come last week but was unable to attend that meeting and did see it on cable and I am the woman referred to in your minutes as wanting to keep the parking ban on Florida Avenue. I'm new to Urbana, I've lived here three months and enjoy the city and enjoy my new house and I'm finally, well, I'm the second owner, but I'm getting organized in it. And just a point of information, I don't know if everyone on the board's aware of it, but all the homes in Savannah Green have a two-car garage and have a driveway that can accommodate two more vehicles and then we do have the side street parking. I don't understand, and I've only been there three months, why we have a need to park on Florida. That sort of always baffled me. Until they put up the no parking signs, I was having a problem on a personal basis with some parking and when they put the signs up, I just jumped for joy. And then when I received the letter that they might rescind the no parking on Florida, I thought, oh, boy. So I went to the Traffic Commission last month and gave them my personal testimonial, you know, which I'm not going to go into here. And I felt really good that Mr. Otto understood what I was talking about and as did Mr. Smith. So if you all decide to take down the signs that were already put up at taxpayers' expense, only to put them up again a couple of years down the line because this supposedly is temporary, you know, that's neither here nor there. But I am a corner lot. I'm at the corner of Florida and Abercorn. I'm retired from teaching. I enjoy sitting on my front porch and looking across the street, not at the golf course per se, but it's a very rural scene out there and there are geese and there are birds and all sorts of things. And I resent the quality of my life being diminished as I have to sit on my front porch to look at vehicles, and they're not Cadillacs and they're not BMWs, that belong to other people on that block but they don't put these vehicles in front of their house, ended up in front of mine. And I resent that my moving van could not even park in front of my house. We had to go over on Abercorn, they had to lug all the furniture up the street, around the corner, and then into my house. So my plea to you is if you decide to rescind the parking, albeit temporary, please let them put those orange no parking stripes in front of my house. I'm on a corner, it will not affect anybody else, I'm Lot 18, you can go from Lot 17 West up to Lot 1 if you want to and let people park on the street, but please don't make me look at vehicles that are not the best to look at and that don't belong to me. I don't park there, I use my garage, so that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Okay, any questions from the floor? Hey, thank you. John Farney of 2504 East Florida.
Thanks. I was here and I spoke at the last, at the committee of the whole meeting last week. The proposed ordinance, as you have in your packets, would allow parking on the north side of Florida Avenue where right now there is no parking. In that ordinance, it states that there should be no parking for 92 feet west and 98 feet east of each of the cross streets in the Savannah Green subdivision. Mr. Gray explained at that meeting that there is a mathematical formula used to determine those parking areas. My argument was that 92 feet east west and 98 feet east of each of those center lines basically takes up a lot and a half in the Savannah Green subdivision. By the time you add all those up, basically half of the block is no parking and the only area where there's parking is right in the middle, which is no help to the folks that live on the ends of the street. We also, well, I went out today, right before the meeting, before it started to rain thankfully, and I thought I'd go and measure and see parking areas here, no parking areas, striped areas along Florida Avenue. At Bermuda Drive, there are no striped areas. At Kinch Street, there are no striped areas. At Rutledge Avenue, it's 56 feet to the east and 52 feet to the west. At Curtis Drive, it's 63 feet to the east and 70 feet to the west. At Lincolnwood Drive, it's 52 feet to the east and then no parking at the west due to an intersection with the Service Drive at the park on the south side of the road. At James Cherry Drive, it's 72 feet to the east and 72 feet, 76 feet to the west, and that's an area where Florida Avenue curves. So obviously, if there is a mathematical formula that's being used to determine this, it's never been used on Florida Avenue before. We also understand that this is to be a temporary situation for two years because Florida Avenue is expected to be higher traffic when it extends to High Cross Road. I would just, as a resident on Florida Avenue who would have this ordinance affecting me for the next two years and then possibly have no parking there again, would like to know if there's going to be no parking the entire length from Florida, from Philo Road all the way east or is it just an odd area? Right now, parking is allowed in front of the apartments and on both sides of the street of Florida Avenue with the exception at the intersections. As a resident of Savannah Green, I do admit, we do have two parking spots at our garages and we have two spaces inside our garage. However, the garages were not designed to be passed through, so there are no sidewalks around the garages. The garages also are basically car storage areas. There is no additional room for storage. There's no way that you can use it for a walk-through. The width of the garage door is basically the width of your garage. Second, the proposed no parking areas take up more than a full lot length and so we end up having basically parking for two and a half of the five lots right in the middle of the block. And third, the area that really concerns me the most, and I could get over the parking really, the lack of communication between our developer, the city, and the residents of Savannah Green. That's what got us all up in arms was the signs appeared one day. We knew nothing about this. We were told at the Traffic Commission meeting that the developer had entered into a verbal agreement with the city and you can ask every resident, every original resident of Savannah Green, we don't believe anything our developer says. We ask for it in writing and I hope the city could do this in the future. In addition to these issues with parking, the developer's yet to install streetlights into the subdivision and he tells us it's the city's problem, the city tells us it's his problem. So you might want to also check into that if you have a chance. Basically, that's what, I stand by what I said at the last meeting where I asked you to reconsider the 92 feet and the 98 feet. I think that's a little extreme. I think something more along the lines of what we have at Rutledge Drive, the 52 and 56 feet would allow for ample space to see traffic on either side. It would also allow for the corner lots to have no parking, which would help Ms. Moran's situation. So if you could please look into that, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from Mr. Farney? Yes, Mr. Whalen?
Hi, I'm the Alderman for that district.
Right.
And I'd appreciate it if you'd give me a call.
Okay.
One of the things you might want to know, I think, and I don't know if you do know it, but the street lighting is 50% now, after great efforts on my part, and I'll take credit for this, was 50% for the city and 50% for the resident. Used to be 70/30, and it took a long time to get this kind of thing done. So I can appreciate your concern, but it is, it is a cost that has to be shared by the city and the resident.
Sure.
Like sidewalks, that's the same thing.
The thing that concerns us about the streetlights is that the developer, in his marketing tools, is selling that it will have decorative streetlights provided by the developer.
Okay.
And so if you could look into that, I will give you a call, I'd love to talk to you about it.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Okay, thank you. Mr. Gray?
Just like to clarify a few things. First of all, streetlights, admittedly, it took quite a while for the developer and the city to come to an understanding of a system that would be acceptable to us. Some of the things that were suggested were not acceptable, it took a while to resolve. The good news is, streetlight material has been ordered, it's in, I think some of it's already been delivered. We're kind of a holding area for the streetlight parts. He's secured a contractor, J.F. Edwards, very good reputable contractor that did work for us the last couple of years. So the good news is, streetlights will be starting to be installed this summer, as a matter of fact. Not continuous street lighting now, but at every intersection, mid-block, alley, intersects, that sort of thing. But there is street lighting being delivered as the developer did indicate. With respect to the visibility triangle, the same form is used for all locations. I don't know where his dimensions were measured from, but the 98, 92, whatever feet is measured from the center line of the intersecting street. So the first speaker this evening asked about no parking if she's in a corner lot. I can tell you there won't be parking in front of that corner lot, but when you figure a right-of-way is 60 feet or so, and if it's 92 feet from the center line, you subtract 30 right-of-way from, half the right-of-way width, so it's about 60 some-odd feet from the property line going east or west. So yeah, it's one full lot, a portion of a second lot, but it's not quite as much as what may appear what the ordinance is stating. So I wanted to clarify that, too.
Thank you.
But anyway, street lighting is coming. It did take a while to get some issues resolved with the developer.
Pat?
Just if you could clarify, Bill, is the developer paying the full cost of the streetlights?
Correct. Yeah, 100%. The developer's paying for the streetlight system. However, once it's installed, accepted by the city, then we'll have the responsibility to maintain that system and pay for the energy cost. But that's what we've done from day one with new systems. So homeowners are not having to pay anything, it's the developer is paying for it and obviously the homeowner's buying lots out there are, in a sense, paying for the lights.
Right.
And the 50/50 split that Mr. Whalen was talking about applies to existing subdivisions that were approved without streetlights if people want to add them, right?
Correct, right.
Thank you, just wanted to clarify that.
Right, but the developer is paying for it.
Any other questions, Mr. Whalen?
Bill, can I ask you a question, too? The corner lots, if, as I understand, that they may be painted yellow to, up to a certain distance?
Yeah, that or it'd be a signage, no parking here to corner signs is probably what we're going to use.
And you know how long that will be, how far back that'll be from the corner?
Well, again, I have to be site-specific here, but the ordinance pretty much stipulates, depending what the intersecting street is, how many feet it would be east and west of the center line of the north-south street.
92 feet usually.
Okay, and I'm just saying, the right-of-way width is 60 feet or half of that is 30, so subtract 30 from 92, you're about 62 feet from the property line going east or west, as an example.
Thank you.
So the lots are 57, 47, I forget the width of the lots, so it's about a lot and a portion of another lot.
Thank you, Bill. Thanks very much. Straightening.
Okay, thank you. Any other petitions and communications from members of the audience? Council members? Go on to reports of standing committees, since we don't have any old business. Mr. Whalen, are you the chair right now?
Oh, yes, sorry.
You have a report from the committee?
Actually, Mr. Chairman, if we go back to petitions and communications, I just wanted to check with council members. I got my municipal ethics guidebook in the mail today, I just wanted to check, did everybody else get them? Is there any other information that people want that, before we can go ahead and proceed with considering the ethics ordinance and saying in the next council meeting? Go ahead, Ms. ...
Although I wasn't at the last council meeting due to a vacation, the committee meeting, I mean, my understanding is that there's not a written, I didn't get in my packet, written information about a motion that I believe you made, Mr. Otto, and so I don't know what it is that has been passed, and so if you have some specific information about what it is that you're proposing, that would be a piece of information that's missing. I did get the booklet and I also have looked on the, I've looked up state statutes, so I have copies of those, and I think Ms. Wyman was also distributing some copies.
Yeah, I'll make sure that gets around.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Pat?
Thank you. The only additional information I want, if it exists, is if there are any other state statutes addressing this topic other than those referenced in the book that we got. So I'd like to see what they are. But if they're, if that's it, if that's all the law, then that was the information we had requested before.
Okay, thanks. There are petitions and communications? Ms. Wyman?
Just to clarify, that's coming, that'll come to a committee meeting, not a council, is that right?
Right.
Because we'll need to discuss it, obviously, and then we'll, should expect to see that in our packets that go out Thursday?
Well, probably not, no.
I mean, not necessarily this Thursday, but at whatever committee meeting, it'll come in the packet so that we'll be able to look at it before we sit down at the meeting, is all.
Right, when we put it on the agenda, it'll be ...
Great.
Yes, Ms. Pat?
Is next committee meeting canceled?
Right, unless something urgent comes up, the meeting next week is canceled. And we'll, so the next committee meeting would be three weeks from yesterday.
26th.
Mr. Whalen?
The, I just talked to Milton and he said he would send them by email. I've been having some difficulty getting things translated into a language that my computer will understand, and I wonder if we can get a hard copy of that.
Yeah, sure.
Change or the addition to the ...
I'll make sure I get a copy to fill us some time to have it included with the packets.
Okay. Any other petitions and communications from council members? All right, well, we were on the report from the committee of the whole. Mr. Whalen?
Oh, yes. The first item, the committee of the whole, our Traffic Commission items, we have first, ordinance number 2004-06-070, an ordinance amending Schedule J of Section 23-183 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code prohibiting parking at all times on certain streets, especially Salem Court.
Hey, do you want to go ahead and move that, Mr. Whalen?
Move it.
Well, yeah, I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? There's no discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Huth?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Mr. Whalen?
Yes.
Ms. Wyman?
Yes.
That motion carries with seven ayes, Mr. Whalen?
Second item on the agenda is the ordinance number 2000-04-06-071, an ordinance amending Schedule A of Section 23-62 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code, increasing state speed limits in certain zones, specifically Airport Road. I move that we approve this.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? There's no discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Huth?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Mr. Whalen?
Yes.
Ms. Wyman?
Yes.
Motion carries with seven ayes, Mr. Whalen?
The third item is an ordinance number 2000-04-06-077, an ordinance temporarily authorizing parking on a street listed on Schedule J of Section 23-183 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code prohibiting the parking at all times on certain streets, specifically Florida Avenue.
Second.
I move, I said approval of that, I'm sorry.
Here we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? There's no discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Huth?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Mr. Whalen?
Yes.
Ms. Wyman?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries with seven ayes. Mr. Whalen?
The next item is Item B, 1B, ordinance number 2000-04-06-072, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of an Urbana Home Consortium Community Housing Development Organization Agreement, Affordable Rental Housing Development Program fiscal year 2004 and 2005. I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? There's no discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Abstained due to potential conflict of interest.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Mr. Whalen?
Yes.
Ms. Wyman?
Yes.
Motion carries with six ayes, let the record show that Ms. Huth is abstaining due to a conflict of interest. Mr. Whalen?
The next item is ordinance number 2000-04-073, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of an Urbana Home Consortium Community Housing Development Organization Agreement, specifically the Urban League of Champaign County Development Corporation, CHDO, operating fiscal year 2004 and 2005. I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? No discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Huth?
Abstained due to potential conflict of interest.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Mr. Whalen?
Yes.
Ms. Wyman?
Yes.
Next.
Motion carries with six ayes and let the record show that Ms. Huth is abstained due to a conflict of interest. Mr. Whalen?
Next item is Item D, an ordinance number 2000-04-06-074, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of an Urbana Home Consortium Community Housing Development Organization Agreement, specifically the Homestead Corporation of Champaign-Urbana-Choto, CHDO, operating fiscal year 2004 and 2005. I move approval.
Second.
Motion a second, is there any discussion? No discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Huth?
Abstained due to potential conflict of interest.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Mr. Whalen?
Yes.
Ms. Wyman?
Yes.
That motion carries with six ayes and let the record show that Ms. Huth is abstained due to a conflict of interest. Mr. Whalen?
Item F, an ordinance number 2000-04-06-076, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of an annexation agreement, specifically 1204 East Kerr Avenue for Robert and Yvonne Jane. I so move approval.
Second.
Harvey?
Did you get the ordinance number, yeah, you read the address from Item F, Mr. Allen?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I misread that. I'll read, I'll start back again. There's so many ...
Wow, so like ...
Ordinance number 2000, this is Item E, 2004-06-075, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of an annexation agreement specifically for 2410 Charlin Drive for Robert and Shirley Skaggs. I so move approval.
We have a motion and a second on this annexation agreement. Any discussion? There's no discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Huth?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Mr. Whalen?
Yes.
Ms. Wyman?
Yes.
Motion carries, actually, I got a vote there, too.
Mayor Satterwhite?
Yes. Motion carries with eight ayes. Mr. Whalen?
The next ordinance is ordinance number 2004-06-076, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of an annexation agreement for specifically 1204 East Kerr Avenue for Robert and Yvonne Jane. I move approval.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? There's no discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Huth?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Mr. Whalen?
Yes.
Ms. Wyman?
Yes.
Mayor Satterwhite?
Yes. Motion carries with eight ayes, Mr. Whalen?
Finally, Item G, an ordinance number 2004-06-078, an ordinance fixing a time and place for a public hearing in connection with a proposed supplement and amendment to the redevelopment plan and related redevelopment projects for the downtown Urbana tax increment redevelopment project area. I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? There's no discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Huth?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Mr. Whalen?
Yes.
Ms. Wyman?
Yes.
That motion carries with seven ayes. Mr. Whalen?
The next item is calling for reports of special committees?
Well, the, just to announce the next meeting, I guess, would be not the 12th, but then the 26th.
Harvey, oh, I'm sorry, yes, the next committee meeting would be the 26th of July.
Thank you, Mr. Whalen.
You're welcome.
Next, we have reports of special committees, any special committee reports? Okay, reports of officers. Mr. Walden?
Just a couple of things. One, Ms. Pat mentioned it earlier, unless, unless we have some urgent matter, the next committee meeting would be canceled. Just would like to introduce Mike Beely. Mike Beely is acting assistant chief, as you know, Lieutenant, or assistant chief page retired last week and Mike's been appointed on acting basis. Those duties effective today. Would like to note also that our TIF 2 proposal did pass the House and the Senate and we're just waiting at this point to see if and when the governor will sign the bill. So that, that important action state is taking place, hopefully we'll hear about that soon. And we're also hopeful in the next few weeks we'll have some better information on our landfill. That's an important issue for us in terms of remediation, so making a lot of progress there. And we also have the monthly ED report, we've been extremely busy, July's going to be a very important month for us. June was busy as well, and John can answer any questions.
We have John Riggits is going to give a presentation of the economic development report, John?
Thank you. Some of the highlights in the activities report for June, we had a meeting, retention visit at the station theater with Councilman Hayes, and that went pretty well. Some of the projects we've been working on, several of them with some annexations and development agreements, most notably, got some new concepts for redevelopment at the Stratford site, and also working on Prairie Winds development and the Colorado extension, which you'll hear about later. Single-family and duplex construction continues at a strong pace. Ninety-three permits were issued for 2004 under Builder Bana, and that brings us to a total of 516 total permits under that program. For June, total buildings altogether, we had 26 new building permits. And we had several meetings with various groups. The DCEO Opportunity Returns Team now is at full staff, and we met with them. We also met with representatives from the CU Win and the staff here at the city. We provided this information to several leads on a variety of proposed projects. And we also continue to participate with our partnership organizations, continuing to work with them on putting on the Sweet Corn Festival and Home Parade and Chili Cookoff, and Market at the Square is averaging 65 vendors approximately every Saturday. And I'll conclude with that and answer any questions you might have.
Any question, any questions for John right now? Okay, thanks, John. Bruce, you have anything more in the reports, okay? Well, we'll move on to new business then. We've got a few items, the first is an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance for the Colorado Avenue Extension Improvement. Mr. Kowalski?
Sure, these next two items really go together, and they relate to the extension of Colorado Avenue from where it currently ends to Stone Creek Boulevard. You'll recall in December, we adopted an annexation agreement with John Hinchen and Virgil Noggle for the Golladay tract and its development, Paul Tatman was to be the developer. And in that agreement, we referred to a separate agreement to be adopted later for the construction of Colorado Avenue. At the time, we were trying to work out the numbers and the logistics, and there just wasn't enough information yet to put all that together, so we put it off until tonight. The, Paul Tatman has purchased the land, he's ready to develop. He has just about completed the construction plans for Colorado Avenue. They've been reviewed by Bill Gray and others, and they're looking pretty good. He's got his cost estimates together, and they look pretty good, too. So, the agreement tonight is to basically ink that agreement to extend Colorado. And the basic nuts and bolts of it is that the developer, Paul Tatman, will build Colorado from where it currently ends to Stone Creek Boulevard as a urban level collector classification of roadway. There will be a four-foot sidewalk on the south side, and then an eight-foot multi-use path on the north side that'll help connect a trail system from Philo to Stone Creek Boulevard, which meets some of the goals of the Greenways and Trails Plan. At this time, there will be no improvements at the intersection of Philo and Colorado or the small stretch of Colorado that is just west of this site, but those are currently being programmed into our capital improvements plans for a future site improvement. The unit prices that have been put together by the developer come to a rough total of about $468,000 for the complete construction and engineering costs of Colorado. The agreement stipulates that the city will fund $65,000 of that cost. I know the developer is ready to start construction in the short term, within the next month or so, and also start development of Prairie Winds, which again is the senior retirement center, the condos and the single-family subdivision. If you have any questions about the agreement, be happy to answer them, I know Bill can help out, too, on more of the technical issues.
No questions, a motion would be in order?
Move approval?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Yes, Ms. Chenoweth?
I just have a question about where the figure of $65,000 comes from. Like, how was it figured out, what portion the city would pay and what portion, I guess, the developer would pay? And I'm also, it seems as though the ordinance that is before us is with Paul Tatman himself and not Tatman Enterprises, and I wonder what the reason why?
That's something I neglected to mention. Apparently, it's got a lot of different names, I guess, but Tatman Enterprises Incorporated is the auto body business more than this, so he asked that change be reflected in the ordinance, so that's why the change is in front of you tonight. And also, one other typo about requiring a two-thirds vote, which isn't necessary, but as far as the cost, we had negotiated with the developer early on about the cost of the road, and it was his indication that a $400,000 range would be something he would think would, he'd be willing to do in his development. Again, we didn't really ink that at the time, but as he got his unit costs in, although he's able to do the job pretty cost-effectively, and we kind of went back to that same agreement. Now, under normal circumstances, he would be required to build half of the road, you know, that fronts his development, that's a normal scenario for a developer to fund a transportation improvement. In this case, there are lots of sections of this roadway that, you know, need to be done. On the other half, we can't just build the south half of Colorado Avenue where there isn't Colorado now. So, that creates an extra burden on him to build a whole road where in most cases, he'd only really be able to require to build half. So, it's just, it was a negotiated figure.
Other questions? Motion and a second, any other discussion? Yes, Ms. Wyman?
Just want to express my appreciation to the staff and to Mr. Tatman as well. I think it's obviously a good thing for the city, for the entire community, to see an increase in the number of housing and housing units that are being built, but additionally to have more multi-use paths. And to see those connected with the Greenways Plan, and so, I think this is a good thing in several different aspects, and I look forward to this development. Thank you.
Other discussion? Other discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Huth?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Mr. Whelan?
Yes.
Ms. Wyman?
Yes.
For the budget ordinance?
Oh, Mayor Satterthwaite, I am so sorry.
So, that carries with eight eyes, and this next is the related agreement on the... Just discussing, it's an ordinance approving an agreement with Tatman Enterprises Incorporated, Colorado Avenue Extension Improvement. Is there a motion?
Move approval?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion, Ms. Wyman?
Just a question regarding what Mr. Kowalski said, is this, should this be an ordinance approving the agreement with Paul Tatman rather than Tatman Enterprises? And I don't know that it matters, but...
Yes, that's...
So... Just wanted to point that out.
We wanted to be with Paul Tatman? So, do we have a, do we have the written agreement with Paul Tatman, or we just substitute Paul Tatman everywhere it says Tatman Enterprises in this? Okay, so our council member's clear that that's substitution that we're voting on? It would be Paul Tatman wherever we see Tatman Enterprises Incorporated throughout the agreement. Okay, any discussion? If there's no discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Huth?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Mr. Whelan?
Yes.
Ms. Wyman?
Yes.
Motion carries with seven eyes. Finally, this evening, got some reappointments and appointments to boards and commissions. As you all know, our various boards and commissions, the terms generally end on June 30th. Most of the boards and commissions have staggered terms, so a portion of the terms on each commission and board come up every year. And I'm pleased to submit the following people to the council for reappointment, to the Building Safety Code Board of Appeals, this would be a term to expire June 30th, 2009, John Maloney, to the CU Cable and Telecommunications Commission, term to expire June 30th, 2007, Kevin Maxon, to the Community Development Commission, terms to expire June 30th, 2007, Robert Lewis, Nancy Quisenberry, and Chris Diana, to the Historic Preservation Commission, terms to expire June 30th, 2007, Alice Novak and Rich Cahill, to the Urbana Human Relations Commission, term to expire June 30th, 2005, this is the student representative from the Urbana High School, Alex Cater, to the Urbana Free Library Board, terms to expire June 30th, 2007, April Getches, Kermit Harden, and Beth Shide, to the Plan Commission, terms to expire June 30th, 2007, Michael Pollak and Lou Hopkins. Since I sent out this memo, I've learned that Alan Douglas has chosen not to accept reappointment to the Plan Commission. Through the Property Structures Code Board of Appeals, terms to expire June 30th, 2007, Donald Keeler, Gary Stebbins, and William Rose. To the Tree Commission, term to expire June 30th, 2007, Michael Stevenson. To the Urbana Public Television Commission, term to expire June 30th, 2007, Kevin Maxon. Submit those for your approval, and happy to answer any questions.
Did you miss this one?
Motion would be in order?
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed.
Motion carries. Next, one new appointment to the Human Relations Commission, Rachel Ditkis. She lives at 402 South Race, Apartment 6, in Urbana. She's currently the program coordinator at the U of I YWCA, has resided in Urbana most of the time since the early 1990s. She, when she graduated, she moved away and is now back to work here in our community at the YWCA. She's been active in the community, is a current and active member of the ACLU, and was, while she was a student, was active with the U of I alternate spring break. And her term would expire June 30th, 2007.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion? Ms. Wyman?
I certainly support this, having Ms. Ditkis on the Human Relations Commission. I know her from other activities and know that she's a strong advocate for human rights and civil rights. I just wanted, I had a couple of questions regarding the appointments. One is, just to clarify or make sure I understand right, there is one person, only one person who has applied for a commission who's, in the last 12 months, who hasn't yet been appointed, is that right?
Yes, and when I get to the next item, I'll inform the council and the public who has not received, or who has not accepted reappointment, and put out a call for volunteers, for people that are interested.
And so, when you do that, if you could also include what boards or commissions have seats available and the number of seats available for each of those boards or commissions?
Yeah, that's changing right now.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? The motion is to approve Ms. Ditkis on the Human Relations Commission. Not, will the clerk please call the roll? Or, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Opposed.
Motion carries. And I've also included on here, there are a number of people that chose not to accept reappointment to another term. We replaced one of those with Ms. Ditkis this evening, but Turk Peacock, Candace Godbolt, and Lester Pritchard all did not accept reappointment from, to the Human Relations Commission. David Owen is retiring from the Tree Commission, and John Carson, after I think some 30 years on the Civil Service Commission, is stepping down as a member as well. As well as Alan Douglas, who is retiring from the Plan Commission. So, I'd like to thank those individuals for their service to the city and the commissions, and wish them well in whatever they choose to pursue. And as Ms. Wyman mentioned, that does leave a number of vacancies in boards and commissions, so if anybody is interested, you can contact my office and get an application. And if you fill that out, I'll be happy to sit down and talk to you about it. And you can get the application online as well, it's on the city's website, which is www.city.urbana.IL.us. Click on Mayor, and then click on Boards and Commissions, and you'll find a place to download the application. So, look forward to hearing from all of you who want to be involved in local government. Yes, Ms. Wyman?
Should we understand then that there are two positions available on Human Relations Commission, one on Plan Commission, and that's it, or do you know, can you tell?
Oh, yeah, one on Tree Commission, one on Civil Service Commission. I don't have the other list, but I know there are a couple of other vacancies as well. One on the Property Structures Code Board of Appeals, one on the Zoning Board of Appeals, and I think, one on Historic Preservation, I believe.
Could you include in our next, I guess it'll be our next council packet, just a memo with the listings of available positions?
Sure.
Thank you.
I think that's about, there are about eight or 10 positions altogether, so a lot of turnover this year. Whelan?
You know, a lot of the people who have been on the boards and served, and choose not to run, to be involved again, have done some very fine work, and that's what we need, is more citizens involved. And it's so rare, I mean, it's very hard to get people involved in our processes for political reasons, or for, because they're too busy, or they're not interested, or that kind of thing. But I would like to specifically compliment Lester Pritchard for what he's done for the handicapped, and it's very noteworthy, and it's not easy, and it wasn't easy for him.
Yeah, I don't know how long Lester served on the Human Relations Commission, but it was a long time, and he served very ably and was very dedicated to the mission of the Human Relations Commission. So, yeah, I think of the ones on the Human Relations Commission, he was the longest-serving, so... Whelan, for those comments. Yes, Ms. Wyman?
Just want to echo, I think we'll be seeing more of Mr. Pritchard. As I understand, he and Barb Pritchard are doing a lot of, continuing to do a lot of advocacy at statewide level on a governor's commission, and so, I'm sure we'll be seeing them, if not just in the news, hopefully in council chambers when issues affecting people with disabilities come up again, because...